I'll take order of the Town Hall Paper, Building Commission Regular and Hybrid Meeting on Monday, November 5th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. In the Town Hall, Kirkwood Conference Room, at 302 Main Street, Old Taverick. Today, me, Bob Freeman, Chairman, our pal, World Vice Chair, Jerry Lewis, Secretary, Regular Commission members Mark Monaco and Henry Thornton. Also present tonight are Alton Huts, Dr. Terrell Bailey, Sandy DeSandro, and John Henry. Here this evening, we also have our zoning enforcement officer, our clerk, Anne Halli, and our consultants this evening. Here at the table, we have Craig Del Rio, Alan Anover, and one person in the audience being our other consultant, Jeff Jacobson. Thank you for coming this evening. Regular business, minutes of the last meeting of Monday, the 21st, 2022. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Great job, thank you. All right, nothing?
No, it's an ad special. I make motion to accept that. The minutes of Monday, November 23rd.
Accept it as a motion. Second, Mark Monaco and Secretary, this is motion to accept that minutes of Monday, November 23rd has presented any discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5:00. Next up on the agenda is regular business. Correspondence, any correspondence?
No.
Workshop, discussed drive-through windows as an accessory use for financial institutions, pharmacies, indoor restaurants, or other food and beverage establishments. Section 53, and we are in the midst of a moratorium that ends April 28th, 2023. All right, so our zoning enforcement officer sent us more or less an assignment to consider a variety of items regarding drive-through windows, and we'll get to that in a few moments. While we have our consultants here, we got some, we got memos, and we got them in pieces. But the critical points that I saw there had to do with regulating drive-throughs, especially as to stacking space and circulation on-site. And those come from outside standards. And the reading that I've been doing actually has revealed that Dunkin' Donuts had a different standard for stacking spaces compared to others. From the land juice regulation standpoint, I don't think we can differentiate between particular restaurants. All the restaurants have to be regulated to the same extent. And therefore, if we know that Dunkin' Donuts generates vehicles in a stacking situation that requires a certain number, then we would have to apply that number for all the other restaurants. Because it's a use, we don't care who's in there serving, why. The use of the use, and if it's approved, and a different use went in there, it should work as well. I've also found from readings that a survey done by the parent company of Burger King looked at drive-through wait times. And that since in 2020, the wait times went way up because there were a lot of people using them relative to the pandemic. The numbers of cars going to drive through windows is still higher than it was before 2020. And maybe it won't go down, who knows? But the wait time has gone up. And the wait time at Chick-fil-A was the worst of all the fast food restaurants. And so with regard to wait time, it's a part of the stacking situation. So it's easier for us to regulate stacking on the ground than to regulate anything to do with wait times. But to know that some places take longer to complete the transaction. And so that a long stacking space is better than one that's too short. Because here in Old Taverick, we have local knowledge of the Dunkin' Donuts at where Smithfield Supply is, that Dunkin' Donuts stacking space is not adequate. That sometimes cars are waiting on Route 1 to enter the stacking. So how many spaces are, stacking spaces are there for that one?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
We know, we know that it's.
Which location was this?
Don't connect with it. So I guess the one thing I just want to interject it, this is not just drive-through restaurants, it's also financial institutions and banks and pharmacies, I'm sorry. We kind of always tend to go to drive-through restaurants because I think we see more interest in them, frequent them more. So just to kind of go through and let us wrap our head around it. The thought tonight is to have Jeff Jacobson, our town engineer, and Greg, our traffic engineer, to go through and give us some insight on our current regulations, our current situation, as well as their experiences and successes from other towns. So it's a good way, since they represent so many different towns in Connecticut, and in Greg's case, in New York, it gives us a good sense of what works in other locations and what doesn't. So we did send you a lot of the stuff on stacking spaces, but I think we kind of have a broader discussion other than how many are in the queue.
It's not just restaurants. It's also drive-through pharmacies, financial institutions, and what was the other?
Banks.
Banks.
Banks. And we sometimes differentiate between coffee shops and fast food restaurants.
Liberty Bank sometimes backs up onto Broder Street.
Yes, yes, I have seen, I have missed it walking Saturday mornings.
CVS backs up on certain.
CVS, yeah.
All right, so what are the benchmarks of good standards for drive-through windows with regard to, I guess it's three parts, curb cuts, the on-site traffic flow, and stacking space?
Right, so a lot to give you feedback on that introduction there. So I'll start with some of the information that you first brought out and mentioned. So some of the prescriptive numbers that were given to you piece me out. Like the first email had examples, but I'll call guidelines that state Connecticut DOT uses. So when they're doing, for example, their whole study reviews and just kind of getting a sense, they kind of check that first. But again, those are guidelines, those aren't standards, those aren't, right? There really is no, what I'll call standards. That first email and that study was probably the most comprehensive we found. And actually, when we cross-reference that study with the information and the guidelines that Connecticut DOT gave me, it was the same exact number. So they were actually, he didn't say so, you know, directly, but it does appear like that was the source that they're using for their quote-unquote national studies indicate that these are, you know, sort of the guidelines to you. That said, that study was 2012. The same people went out and I can send you, I don't think I sent you the link to the video clip where they actually do a presentation. And I'll fast forward, I'll give you the actual like minute in the video, so you don't have to watch an hour and a half of stuff. But he actually breaks down the data, they break down the different locations that they did. It wasn't all, for example, in one town in one state. It was, you know, several different states and several different places. So it was a real statistical sort of empirical data, real data. And the numbers from 2018 to 2012 did not change that much. So that was one thing, because we were like, ah, 2012, you know, that's something going to poke a hole in that right away. But they went back out in 2018 and it barely, barely moved a needle as far as those numbers go. So that's a starting point. And then the other thing is, I mean, there's a lot to talk about here, but you also mentioned you want to, you would like to, it sounded to me anyway, to provide, you know, if this is the use, this is the standard that you should have as far as stacking, queuing capability and all the other sort of criteria for your site plan design. You know, I think there should be more flexibility in that. Because not every fast food drive-through is a Chick-fil-A, right? We know that they're like up here and, you know, the biggest demand, and then you've got, you know, your Subways and your Jimmy John's and other places that are, you know, somewhere lower on this, you know, spectrum of demand and everything. So what it comes down to is, and you were mentioning waiting times, in our terminology, it's demand times processing, right? So what's the demand? Is there 100 cars trying to get in there an hour, or is there 20 cars trying to get in there an hour? And then is your processing time 90 seconds, or is it three minutes? Right? Because they're both the same. If I could have half the demand and twice the processing time, and that stack might look exactly the same, and you go, oh, boy, they're going to do a lot of business. But it's, it's a function of those two variables.
I have seen other towns have regulations that actually break out those drive-through restaurants that have a menu board.
Correct.
And they have stacking for the windows and different stacking numbers, right? The menu.
And some of the examples I gave in that second memo actually will show you if you actually, you know, what I want to do next, and it was kind of hard to, to make like some kind of a summary table. What ended happening with the summary table was every place was so different, like the columns in the rows just didn't add up to anything that was digestible. So it was almost like, you know, doing this sort of written out and then just providing the short summaries that we did. For now is the best way. I'm still trying to figure out a better way to, you know, make a snapshot of all of this information. One of the things, turning around to some of our recent experience that I'm seeming to gravitate to, there's a lot more attention on this issue everywhere than there has been in a while. So probably because of the pandemic, probably because a lot more of these, you know, they're not only standalone facilities now, now they're, like you're experiencing, you know, the pads within already developed shopping centers of mixed use, right? So they're not having their own curb cut, they're sharing a curb cut, they're actually accessed within parking lot, et cetera. So that even complicates it a little further. And part of the reason for that is, you know, like us traffic engineers in particular, we say, you want to screw up your own site, that's okay, but don't spill back onto our road. Right? Well, there's more and more of a concern of site plan reviewers saying, you know, I'm not so sure this is going to work, and, you know, and where you draw the line on, you know, the comments that you can make as far as, you know, within their property. But we do give them that. But again, going back to one of the other things, something that I did like that we started to do recently, and we'll see where this whole thing goes, but is to start off maybe with some of these guideline numbers. And then, you know, say, all right, provide, just like you do today, provide your traffic study and traffic report that says why you think it should be more or less, right? And most of the time, they're going to be arguing for less because they don't have the space, right? And I'll give you an example that we just did for Jimmy John that recently opened. And now we'll actually be able to see how it's doing. They ended up giving us a lot of data on national sales. And so there's, again, going back to sort of, I'll call it tiers of the drive-throughs, but sticking with the rest of the ones, because everybody understands that for now. The McDonald's and the Burger Kings and the Chick-fil-A's are like, let's call it tier one. Then you have your tier two, which are like the Jimmy John's and all types of places. Well, they have much less turnover, they have much less, and then Jimmy John's is like, they actually try to sell on the fact that they do a 90-second, you know, service from the time you order to the time you're served at the window. And if you watch their videos online, you can see they're, they're making 10 sandwiches in a row and getting the orders out in 90 seconds. So, but they have a much less demand, right? And a lot less turnover. So that's pretty good data to give you a little bit of a comfort that they're not going to, you know, be at the same level and maybe require 12 spaces, maybe they require eight. So there is a way to follow up on the guidelines, do some, you know, provide the traffic study, provide the analysis, provide the data that says, ah, we're a little bit different. You know, the other thing is, one place may have an 80% drive-through share versus 20% walk-in, and another place might have a completely different rate. So there are a lot of varies. And the other point, before I forget, this is, I made my notes as you were talking, was you want to sort of have that same standard for a drive-in fast food restaurant, for example.
Right.
I'm not so sure, you know, that's the way it'd go, because like I just said, different places may require it, then you might be making it, you know, unnecessarily, you know.
A coffee shop would have more volume than a restaurant.
Yeah, or even a fast food restaurant to another fast food restaurant, or Dunkin' Donuts versus, you know, some other drive-through coffee shop. But what I do like, and I've read, I can't remember, I don't think it was yours, I can't remember which one specifically, was that when there is a change of ownership, right? So the name changes, right? That they need to reapply and, or, right? Because you may approve, you know, a, you know, lesser demand facility, right? And then you have the Chick-fil-A come in next, change the sign, and if you've already said, well, all fast foods just need 12, well, now you, now you have the problem. But I think every time it changes, that would be something I would recommend that you have to, you know, just because it's the same land use, you still need to revisit, get
And as from a traffic perspective, did the drive-through restaurants capture passersby or are they destinations? Or, and is that dependent on proximity to highway exits and?
There's a lot of that, but, you know, you know, almost everywhere, and especially here in Connecticut, we do a 20%, 25% pass-by rate. And even if there's, again, if this is going to Connecticut DOT, they won't, you can show them all the data in the world, that's 50% is the pass-by, and they'll be like, sorry, you can only, you can only give a 25% credit as far as the traffic study goes. But the real world is, that's another story. So, you know, for consistency, you may want to just stay with that. In terms of, it could go the other way. You might say that this certain use is not a pass-by type trip, it's more of a destination. Some of them are, right? I mean, I go out of my way for my kids and his Chick-fil-A.
Does the traffic situation picture change for a single street line versus a corner block?
No, it doesn't as far as, as far as the way that we conduct our studies, no. All right. We don't give any different weight to the little thing. Even if it's, and I was a one step front, I thought you were going to say internal to a shopping center versus.
Well, we have a curb cut. We had one example that I sent to Chris, and Chris sent it to everyone else, it was a California drive-through restaurant that was situated on a block. There was side streets on both sides of the lot, and it went to a rear, it was like an alleyway access. So they basically had, they had the whole block, and they proposed putting curb cuts to the major thoroughfare. But it was looked at from other perspectives, and if they had no curb cut on the major thoroughfare, but used the two side streets to get to their two access points, they could have much less input, impact on the traffic on the major thoroughfare. And then it was a matter of internal circulation of vehicles on the lot. So in that, in a case where you have the whole, the whole block, more or less, with two side streets, that was, to me, it was pretty obvious, you could save, save the main thoroughfare for, for through traffic at that spot. Well, we don't have, we may not have that particular incidence in Old Taverick, but we have a number of drive-throughs where they're on a corner, a lot with access from two different streets. And did those get analyzed differently, or they have separate categories for consideration?
No, again, from a trip generation perspective, the same. However, from an access and site plan review, yeah, they would go different. And, yeah, I don't want to go too far with that, but, you know, most of the time, if possible, and all other things equal, you know, the less curb cuts you have on the main street, like you said, you know, it's not just intuitively better, it's technically and analytically usually better, because now you have two places to turn, or one place to turn in and out of, as opposed to with the curb cut and side street.
Yeah.
Right? And then if they're very proximate to each other, it's confusing to the people in the opposite directions. Is that person trying to make a left into the driveway, or is he trying to make a left into the situation?
So risked getting ahead of ourselves, regulations that are trying to provide for some kind of addressing of multiple situations like that. East Line regulations are available online, and they say that drive-through facilities shall not generate the need for additional driveway curb cuts. Well, if the lot was previously used for something else, then it had X curb cuts, then if you put a drive-through there, each line would not permit new curb cuts. And so that would have an impact on the attractiveness, how attractive the lot would be for a drive-through restaurant in that sense.
Yeah.
So that was one.
Right, that's why it's very hard to, like, why I was reluctant to make a blanket statement, because as we like to say, you know, every place is different.
Yeah.
It really is, it's just, you know, very hard to sort of just take on template and say, this is what you should do, this is what works.
Well, East Line also has another means of reducing the density of drive-throughs in quotes proximity, which, as you said, compounds things, right? So they have a regulation in section 20.26, part K. No restaurant or food service establishment with a drive-through facility shall be built or established upon a lot or premises within a radius of 1,000 feet of any park, of any other building, lot, or premises used for that purpose. So your drive-through restaurant or food service establishment has to have 1,000 feet before the next one.
Before the next one of the same use, I could have 10 driveways in between there, but.
For the same, for restaurant or food service.
Yeah.
Now, when you have banks and pharmacies as well, they might be within that distance, but you can't have East Lines. East Line, it was some years ago, it saw the need to put separation distance.
Off the top of my head, I don't, I don't think that that's, that's a rough one. Because like I said, you could, you know, have 10 driveways in between and that 1,000 feet of other uses, they could be very busy uses. So what you gain, something must have happened and triggered that.
Yes, they had multiple drive-throughs very, very close to one another.
And they said.
And they decided that that was not where they wanted it to go.
Well, I mean, like most things in zoning, you have the traffic study, you have the backup to say, you know, we want an exemption from that particular.
Well, they always want to be in a high-traffic lane, of course. Yeah, all right. So as for pedestrian safety and on-site traffic flow, that's just, just a little bit more jutty than jutty the traffic cost of the property line. And so we have in our regulations, section 68, it's in the gray box, but it still counts as the regulation that. In a gray box, next to 68.1.2, it says, within the pedestrian node, do not locate a parking area or access driveway to or connecting parking areas between the non-residential building and the street line. So that would speak to me to say that a drive-through window should bring, have its exit be the curb cut that goes right out from the window to the street, so there's no need to circumnavigate the building to get back to the entrance site. The Dunkin' Donuts at Smithfield has a road between the building and the street. And if they had positioned the building differently, they could have had one entrance curb cut by Monroe Muckler to serve the whole site, and the other curb cut could have been for the drive-through window to exit the site. And then everybody would be entering and traveling through more space to get to the stacking space and through the parking lot to get to the drive-through window. So that, it seems to me that if you can, it would have an impact on the number of curb cuts. And the other one that comes to mind is that West Marine, that was built as a financial institution with drive-through spots, there were two, one next to the other. And that exit goes right out to Route 1. You can't go back to West Marine without going on Route 1, from that one. So there's some design aspects that can address some of the concerns. And in Old Taverick, we're big on sidewalks, we're using lots of money that's coming to town to install additional sidewalks. The pedestrian node is pretty much Route 1, and the sidewalks are going to make it more pedestrian-friendly. And so the number of curb cuts and the fast food businesses that have cars crossing the sidewalk multiple times becomes a concern for pedestrian safety. Now, I'm going to beat up on the traffic engineer and say, I know you don't care about pedestrians.
That's why I like to say I'm a transportation engineer. I hate the connotation of traffic because it implies cars. But who's going to know? We're always multimodal and.
We call it strode.
With the bike racks inside, down on every site plan, because that's something that hardly ever gets mentioned.
So we're, being, a strode is a street or a road that has so many lanes that is really intimidating to pedestrians to try to cross it. And we're getting close, that we'll call the chuckings. There's five lines, line of cars, as a pedestrian, you'd have to cross, across the street there, across Route 1. And that, that's enough, we don't need any more of those. So putting in additional turning lanes is not where we would, not where I think Old Taverick should be going. Just to accommodate the vehicles, right?
Yeah, that's, today's terminology completes streets and such, you're sort of alluding to, designing, they're all users, transit, pedestrians, high schools.
Jeff has lots, lots of history and knowledge of the local situation. What do you see as guidelines that we might consider for drafting regulations to address Old Taverick issues?
Yeah, I mean, I find the same thing that Greg does, is that the towns in the area really aren't very specific in terms of drive-throughs, either in terms of numbers. And a lot of the regulations are somewhat vague. They'll, they'll say, you know, you shouldn't have those pedestrian conflicts. One of the towns said that you should not have, people have to cross a drive-through lane, for instance, to get the. People have to cross a drive-through lane, for instance, to get to the principal access to the building. Which is a situation that's at Dunkin' Donuts at Smithfield. Um, I also find that the larger the site. The more stacking distance individual, you know, uh, businesses are looking for. You know, there's a Dunker, say, uh, for instance, a Dairy Queen in Portland. And they have a very large, separate, independent lane that goes, there is one point where it, it crosses through, uh. A parking lot entrance, but a very long, uh, stacking lane.
Uh, is it used as stacking or is it just a long?
It actually, it's, it's, it's independent from the parking, so you don't have to go through the parking lot. In fact, I, I, I brought it with me. You don't have to go through the parking lot. It's a whole separate lane that wraps around the parking area. Those cross one intersection where the parking connects with an exit lane and then goes around the building. Uh, another one recently, and I haven't, uh, reviewed it yet, but it just came in, which is interesting, is the Brain Replace Project in Portland. Which is a fairly good-sized mixed-use development, residential, commercial, uh, with some separate building pads. And Starbucks is coming in there and they actually just submitted a plan to, uh. Reorient the whole Starbucks site to provide a larger, uh, drive-through than the developer had originally shown. Uh, on his plan, uh, which I think is, is somewhat powering in terms of what they're saying. In terms of numbers of, of vehicles, you know, that wanna use the drive-through. Even from the personal standpoint, I mean, I'm, I'm a Dunkin' Donuts guy. And the bank, I usually always, before COVID, always went into the, uh. You know, the tellers in, inside, I, I lived in Chester. But, uh, I found my habits have completely changed. I'm so used to now using the drive-through. That I don't even get out of the car anymore where I always used to. Uh, so I think there, there is something to, to be said that, uh. You know, there are more people using those drive-through lanes and probably will continue to use the drive-through lanes. For at least the foreseeable future.
That's, that's quite a good point. I don't think it was on your, your laundry list, but things. Drive-through restaurants in mixed-use developments. That seems to be incompatible. If you have people living above the drive-through. That doesn't lend itself towards taking the outdoor use of, by the people who live there. For them to, to, to go outdoors, to, to access maybe outdoor storage space or, or even to, to, to walk on the grass. Somewhere nearby. But a drive-through in a residential combination and mixed use.
The, I've seen it with banks.
Hmm.
I've seen it with banks, yeah, where a bank will have a drive-through underneath a residential building. This, the, the one in Portland's actually a separate, independent pad. I think that they have, you know, two seven-story residential towers. They've got, you know, uh, two-story commercial, future, um. Grocery store, whatever, and then they have a couple of independent pads in there. And this independent pad. Actually Starbucks had, you know, redesigned the site to provide a much larger stacking area than they had originally shown. Uh, and I think originally it was gonna be a Dunkin' Donuts. So I, I, you know, I think, I've seen the same thing that Greg does, that the smaller the site. You know, they seem to, to say that they don't need as much stacking. Uh, but when they have that flexibility in a larger site, uh, the first thing I see is, is much larger stacking area.
We do have a minimum of. Square foot to jump the site for, in order for there to be a, a. If they're all drive-throughs or just restaurants. And with, and we, we have a minimum square foot, which is forty thousand, forty thousand or eighty thousand?
Eighty thousand.
Eight, right? So we, there should be sufficient, there's space on the lot for stacking space, you know? So then it comes down to the location of the building. We can allow or require the building to be ten feet from the street line in the pedestrian load. There is not much that has taken advantage of that. The West Marine building, it has a part of it that's ten feet from the street line. And I think that Ulta, across the street from that, Ulta. And, uh, where else? The Five Guys, what's on the outside of the street? Those buildings are closer to the street than the setback otherwise would have allowed. Now, it doesn't really work for pedestrians because they don't have any doors on outside the building, but that's a separate problem. But if the building were close to the street, then there'd be no room for. A, a, a dri, uh, a drive-through window to have a, a, an access roadway between the building and the street. It would, it couldn't happen. So in that sense, that's another tool that the zoning commission would have to. Put a building for a drive-through really close to the street, but then where does the drive-through window go? On, on, on the backside of the building or on the side of the building? And then they have to like make a U-turn to go back, back through the parking lot or?
And you can lift the, the typical scenario, right? So think about, you know, Burger King or McDonald's where you have a few parking spots in front. Then you have the building and then you have on the outer edges, parking again. If you brought the building in and you put that same parking right behind it. Then you drove further back around, you still could have functionality.
And from the drive-through, then you'd have to go straight out.
Straight out, right? And then you'd be crossing the sidewalk at that same point. You know, and you know, I, I thought of something when you were talking, because you also. One of your criteria that doesn't seem to have ever been implemented, maybe it was before these came out. Was, I think it was three hundred and fifty feet or something of front inch in order to be a. Implement a, a drive-through, if I'm not mistaken?
It is, yeah.
Right? Yeah, and I was wondering, maybe that was a way of. Kind of getting to the same one thousand feet thing, because if you only have three hundred and fifty feet, then how close can you be to the neighbor? Um, but, you know, McDonald's and. All, all the ones that are single, you know, not use are only about two hundred thirty-five inches. Two hundred and fifty feet is a lot for a, just a single pad, drive-through type thing. So, Rick.
I don't know if anybody else has any questions, but I have some questions at some point now. So. Do you have any experience? Well, things are changing. So I think our regulations are kind of more the nineteen seventies drive-through, not, I've made some notifications over the years. But people don't really need to go into a bank lobby. There are Dunkin' Donuts and other buildings where you just drive up. They don't have a restaurant indoor or a lobby indoor. And, and our drive-throughs are all associated with. A restaurant, a pharmacy, somewhere you physically walk in and, and. Do you think that those are, can create more congestion or, or you're trying to put all the business obviously through a drive-through, so? I mean, do you think it makes that difference? Or people are gonna just use the drive-through, using the drive-through, like Jeff's saying, well, you know, I'd rather just go through the drive-through, it's my new. Habit, um.
Right, well, and again, how long is that gonna last? You know, it's, it's hard. There, at least, so here's the other issue to sort of counterbalance that. Mobile and the app ordering, right? So on pre-ordering. So I might be getting in that same queue for now or sometimes not. And we're just dealing with a, um, Denver, we just got approval for a new, um, Chipotle. And Chipotle, and you can Google this too now, um, they're, they're not doing, they're doing cashless drive-throughs, basically. So that's the new trend, cashless drive-throughs. If you wanna go through the drive-through, you gotta preorder. And pay, and then you're just going up and saying, you know, one fifty-seven, thank you, have a nice day. Right? And, you know, they know when you're there, you know, the GPS, they know when you've entered the lot, they know you put one fifty-seven a little. You know, closer to the window.
It's a drive-through vending machine. And when a.
You don't even have to go into your pocket. And look at the actual, you know, so Chris, Chris always, uh, you know.
But we're changing it.
Yeah.
The thing is, and I mean, you know, honestly, I think I've stopped going to most drive-throughs because. After COVID, because there's so many people waiting, I just don't wanna deal with it. Whose orders messed up? I'd rather just take my coffee at home. You know, because then you go into the lobby and half the time the lobby's locked. Or the people inside, whatever business, they're so busy dealing with the window and the mobile apps. You're like, how do I have a person? Whoa. And it, it's, I, I mean, I think it's changed for everybody, but I think. We're kind of tackling what we have, but I think we're, we're changing and. I, I mean, you look at places like Route sixty-six and, you know, Middletown and. You go through and you have three or four drive-throughs on a lot. And I mean, I think that's really where we need to. I don't think we're solving the problem that we have. We don't really have that many drive-throughs in a row. I think we have. Something evolving that's much different than what we've been working with for forty years. Or fifty years in these regulations. So, I mean, do you, any experi, I mean. Jeff has a ton of site plan reviews, you do a ton of traffic reviews, I guess. My question is, what works, what's problematic? What, you know, what do you see from all the other towns? That we should be concerned about is having five. Different drive-throughs on a lot, you know, is that an issue? You know, having, or, or does it matter? I mean, do we wanna attach them to the end of a shopping center? And, and I think that.
Food court requires.
And, and you.
Where you share the whole central.
Yeah.
Parking.
Instead of being food truck, where you have to get out of your car and stand up to go to the food truck. They're all drive-through windows and you don't have to leave your home. It's, but, we're, we're guessing at what. The future might be and, uh, but we're trying to, uh, be aware of possibilities. So that Old Saver can accommodate businesses to the extent that they fit. In, in Old Saver without causing congestion in the streets and pedestrian safety problems. And, uh. The, the accompanying litter and, and trash issues and, and seagulls and whatever.
Well, there's trends on, for lack of a better terminology, fast food or just drive-throughs. And no indoor service.
Right, well, right now, we are rigs, our rigs say that it has to be an indoor restaurant.
Right.
And then yet we have the, or other.
Or pharmacies, and I kinda talked about that too. I mean. You look at all the COVID clinics that opened up, I mean, what's gonna stop you from going to a drive-through window and getting a swab? And, and going on your way. So yes, do, do you need the lobby?
Well, there were times during.
Or do you want the lobby, I guess, is that, or, or in your restaurant?
When COVID was worse and staff was hard for a place with a drive-through window. It, it was hard to get the staff to work there and the customers were going to the drive-through window. Never mind that a person would go in and have to be there in person and not be served, but. There were times when the door to the restaurant was locked and the only part that was open was a drive-through. Now, that's okay for a financial institution, but is that what Old Saver wishes to have in terms of food and beverage establishments with? Only a drive-through window? And then you have to consider. How small, how compact can that building be? Uh, photo map for food, you know, and a little yellow booth in the parking space, there is, how, how, how far can it go?
That's, uh. Well, well, the other thing too is when you approve an application with a statement of use. I, I think initially CBS wanted twenty-four-hour directive. Well, it didn't work. So they limited their hours. I mean, what's gonna stop an indoor restaurant now for asking for twelve hours, but then they're really only open four hours, which is. Less intensive reuse. Or what if they're only open on the weekends? For the lobby. I mean, what, just as far as that means, is there some type of a minimum? You're gonna make someone build a restaurant or a bank lobby or an indoor pharmacy, but if they're only open two days a week to have a drive-through. Is that what you're looking? Yeah. It, it gets super complicated.
Oh. All right, so, um, and, and if you have anything else to suggest for consideration that might lead to. Keeping or changing or adopting new regulations?
Well, I mean, it, it's obvious, we need to do something to avoid the situation that we have. Uh, at Smithfield and the Dunkin' Donuts there, that's, that's just really, in my opinion, not, not working.
Right.
Uh, it's a problem with, with stacking, uh, it's a problem with exiting. It's a, a, a problem with, you know, pedestrians having to cross. You know, a, a, a traffic lane plus the drive-through lane that to get into the, into the establishment, so. Um, you know, I mean, just from the discussion, th, this is, you know, i- it's an evolving. Thing right now. I mean, you had mentioned Chipotle. I mean, I, I would never have guessed Chipotle would have a, a, a drive-through. Uh, but, you know, ten years ago, I would never guess the Dairy Queen would have a drive-through. And I, I talked with them in Portland. And they said the far majority of their business is done through drive-through. So I think that's, that's the trend.
Yeah. You think what?
Yeah, I said, that's the trend. It is, you know, being able to drive through. Um, with, with probably places that we never even thought of, uh, you know, before.
So for now, drive-throughs are permitted, special exceptions only in the B four district. And in where else? In B two. They're not permitted in restricted business, B three districts or B one. Or the I, they're not permitted in the I district.
We've never even found a B two and B four. I don't really think any, maybe drive-through would wanna go to an industrial district unless they had such a huge staff.
Yeah.
If for a bank or something like that, where you had hundreds of people going to cash their paychecks, but it's, take a picture of it, you don't. Need to cash your paycheck anymore.
All right, so. Can we, can we use your, your, your checklist of things? What do we want? And if we just go through those and we get a, a, a score sheet of. Um, we think this would be, um, good to have it, we don't have it? Or we have it, we don't like it, we could consider removing it? So that. We didn't print that one out. No, that's okay.
I have it in front of me if you want me to read it.
Actually, is it, is it marked up or?
No, it is, it has my little, like, yours, just in bold. You wanna make?
We have questions, I do the same.
That would work.
I'll just run it. Do I even know where we are gonna go with this tonight if it was? Yeah, kind of winging it, can I?
Yeah, in the meantime, I'm. So one thing I will follow up with while she's doing it. Stakes. And Jeff, I don't know if you stumbled upon this, but, um. I was not really, you know, paying too much attention, although I think we picked up one or two municipalities. In Connecticut that is starting to do the same thing we're doing, which is revisit their regulations and guidelines and. You know, how they're addressing a whole drive-through issue. Um, but we did not see a lot of that just pop out at us. But you don't know that, right? You don't know it's.
It's incredible.
Doing that, so, or doing a, you know, a desktop search. Maybe if we do a different search to say, I just like, you know.
Right.
Thinking about this, who's, you know, and what are they, what steps do they take? The other thing I wanted to do and I did not get around to it is, you know, I'm a member of I T E, which is to the transportation engineers outside. And, and, and so we have our, you know, um. Our chats and everything to kind of share information. So I was gonna go on there. And, you know, I'd be surprised if I didn't find a couple of, you know, strings of, on this topic. So, I'll, I'll let you know when we find out the details.
Okay, that would be good, yeah. We're a small community. And the population density is a factor in restaurants in general, drive-throughs for other purposes. Uh, together as, as well. We have a seasonal population density and we don't have sewers. So we have all these layers of things that would impact, um. And the population density is a factor in. Restaurants in general, drive-throughs for other purposes. Uh, together as, as well. We have a seasonal population density. And we don't have sewers. So we have all these layers of things that would impact.
No. I mean, the other thing too is people do drive. To Monville to go to Chick-fil-A. I mean, think about it. Where's their nearest Burger King? Or McDonald's other than ours? And I mean, if someone. Really wants their big map or the water or anywhere else, are you going Middletown? I've heard of Jeezy's Line, I think. I don't get around that.
No, you will now.
I went there because.
Once you buy the car, you see it all the time.
It was okay.
They have, they have a long stack.
Yeah, they have a very, very good operation.
I, I don't care where you find their locations.
They are, they're.
They have twelve, fifteen cars in line all the time.
Yep, and usually double. Usually two lines that merge into one. They have, another thing you don't see anywhere else, they have parking lot managers actually managing the lanes.
We've heard of them.
Outside with clipboards. They went in dead.
Well, too glad CBS doesn't have. Anybody managing their, their drive-through. I mean, you can't get through with two cars. And you're supposed to be able to do that. Thank you.
Well, the other one that's different too, and I've never. Eaten there is Sonic's. Don't they have some type of?
The people come out.
The people come out to you versus you sitting in the lane.
They used to have something like that on the Berlin Turnpike.
Okay, now the italicized questions, where would you like to see them or limit them? We need to change.
I would have concerns in the B two. Because of congestion.
I, I, I.
We stumble over that.
More restrictive or get eliminated?
My feeling is eliminated.
But here's more. All three?
So can we, can you do that?
Yeah, I mean.
We kind of consolidated it because they were all the same.
Yeah, I think we have to look at each category differently.
Yeah, or maybe look at the size of the road.
You look at the size of the lot and if the lot could go into it, but overall, B two is fairly congested. And small. And I think that that's. Development in B two would, could be perceived as a big negative.
It is the only place that they're currently located.
I know that, I know that, but that's where you have the issue. I mean, like Burger King, if you're coming from over the railroad bridge, you know. You're always hitting the brakes when you get through the light because people are taking the right into Burger King.
Yeah, realistically though, how many, how many more lots are located in that area that could potentially like Palace?
Some, some towns use a minimum distance from a bus, uh, from a cross street.
Right.
So many feet from a cross street.
Right, and Jeezy's Line or Lime was a thousand feet foot radius.
Yeah, that's a radius from another one, but actually you can't have an exit or an entrance within three hundred feet of a center line of a cross street. That's the way to limit, to give them free way from the intersection.
And that's, those are some of my thoughts.
Right, so.
What if they were on-site in all the driveways?
So combined?
So say. You went in the Dunkin' that we have now and Agway was combined with the Job Lot Plaza. And you went into the Job Lot Plaza. We had those discussions. You go in one way and then you could go through without having the extra curb cuts in the B two.
Well, that's another, that's another consideration. If you have multiple ones. On a site, you have, you restrict entries and exit. And we all have to have to operate within.
But that's your responsibility. Is there any?
Jeff, if you wanna come up to the table, it'll be fair.
If you only have one curb cut, then all the stacking in the parking becomes the problem of property. It's not, it's not an issue. You get one curb cut, you put all your cars in there and if it doesn't work, it's your fault.
But if you had, if you had a strip of land. That there was five dri- various types of drive-through fast restaurants and each one had their own entrance and exit. I see that as a, as, as a big negative.
I, I, I agree.
So if you look at, you look at a potential that way and say, okay, you can have on a certain size lot, whatever the minimum is. You can have X amount, but you restrict entrance and exit for the combination.
So right now we're eighty thousand square feet. Yes, and we'd have no limit on the number.
Within a, a site.
If you're on a big lot, you could put multiple drives.
Yeah, right.
So do you wanna? Phase that? So you're saying in eighty thousand, you could have one if it's on-site or two or any other? I'm just trying to report it.
Well, I think an eighty thousand square foot lot. The comfortably. Is one, is one drive-through. I don't think it should be more than one. So my, my thinking. So do you multiply that and say a hundred and sixty thousand, you have two? Or so and so, or? I'm not sure. I haven't thought that all the way through.
So, um. Not that we're gonna iron out all the details this evening, but. The, the concept so far is to consider reducing or eliminating drive-through restaurant windows in B two. Impact the number of curb cuts or drive-through windows. Across the board of all three financial pharmacy and restaurants in the B two. Anywhere else? We already have drive-through, we have drive-through that in the B two, the easiest one to pick up. We got Wells Fargo and Webster Bank. In B two and Guilford Savings Bank on the other side of Ten Street. That's also B two.
And Liberty.
Then the financial stuff, right?
Liberty Bank drive, just.
The kiosk.
The kiosk.
Yeah, all of those, yeah. And then there's technically a financial drive-through at West Marine. That's what, that's what that was approved.
Previously approved.
Oh, oh.
Right, right, not B two.
That's B four. There would be in B one. There's what is it? Key Bank and now and, um, Little Bank and Essex Savings and Bank of America. Uh, there's four. They will have.
They all have drive-throughs.
And those are all B two?
No, B one. So that's same street and it's all pre-existing.
You know, the banking industry has created their own bank, bank. I don't even go to the bank. We do it all on my phone and do it from home.
Yeah.
Right, which is not something you can do with fast food, obviously. They've created a different situation. Banks aren't really that big a problem. I, in my mind.
I agree. Well, you know, there is with the fast food. You, you can order now from every fast food place with Uber Eats and.
Yeah.
And all the delivery services. You don't realize that.
Services like Uber Eats. You could call for a restaurant right down the street. And an hour and a half later, someone brings, probably here from New Haven to bring you something you couldn't just walk down the street for. So we don't have as much of a.
The venture it'll tie into the direction that's seems to be favored by the state. In which regards to increasing dwelling unit density in particular locations and not providing any parking whatsoever. So that people's reliance on vehicles is supposed to be lessened. But in this part of Connecticut, I don't think that's gonna work. So. Uh, we're, we're concerned.
That goes back to your walkability and designs where if, if the stores are more. Closer to the front, you have that like you do here in B one with the downtown field. You're parking in the back.
We don't have the critical mass of population for that to function well here. So. Thank you hard for it, but don't do it somewhere. Alright, so if we're talking about, you know, B two being congested, which it is. The possibility of congestion exists in B four because you get that, that whole corner over there, Spencer Plain Road. That I think is probably a concern because of just the traffic over there. Yeah, right? So I'm not sure we should just restrict B two, but maybe B four as well.
Well, in terms of separation distance?
Right, exactly, yeah.
Think of the other areas of the B four. You've got Mariner's Way and the Auto Mall. I mean, right now someone could buy the Auto Mall and, I mean, I don't think it's a great location. It's, it's not. It is off of Route nine a little bit, but. Someone could buy this, a piece of land like the Auto Mall and put drive-throughs there or make it into a shopping. Yeah.
Yeah, it's not congested now, but it's got a lot of potentials. Alright, so not, not to, you know, if you, you've got a, the, the list of things that we will address in finer detail. Are reducing the number of drive-through density. In B two and, and, and B four as well. Alright, what do you like, dislike about the current drive-throughs in town? The. Inadequate stacking expense has, has, has been observed. The increase required in stacking expense.
In crossing. Restricting crossing. Restricting crossing the lot. To from the lot. Major concern.
Uh, what are the likes and dislikes about drive-through experiences that we had in other towns?
Before you get onto that one, I had made a note about the drive-throughs and one of the things we like is deep property. So moving to Donald's and Burger King, you have that. The deep property allows you flexibility to design a fairly long. Stacking and queuing area before you get out to the street. Versus, you know, if they made the Dunkin' Donuts on the corner of Spencer Place, then you have. You know, something spilling out.
Well, Burger King certainly has that depth. Yeah, compared to McDonald's, it, it, I think it's inadequate and it's proved that during, during the last few years. That it's backed up out into the road. Now, we already know about Dunkin' Donuts. Their scenario, but if you, if whatever the Burger King lot size is, that's. And I can say ideal, but that's more favorable.
It's a corner too. I mean, it's a smaller. Yeah, got people going in and out and in on the other road. So you've got really three. Different ways and then the drive-through.
Well, you're trying to throw in the Uber pickup spots, whatever that is. You can have good pickup spots on the American line too. Uh, next, do we want drive-through lanes parallel to sidewalks along street lines and does it matter where those lanes are? That's the pedestrian safety factor. Yeah, so they should be. They should be minimized. And how, how, how do we determine if there's a feasible improvement alternative to the one? Cooking cutter development? That's, well, that's the way we always do. We always have that lane there. How do we, how do we make it so that that's? Not gonna happen?
Yeah.
Just go give it the, the pavement for, for vehicles between the building and the street?
That's a simple way of doing it.
Landscape. Outdoor seating.
And we do try to do.
Public access, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, relationship between drive-throughs and parking on the property? And how do you keep the stacking and drive-through traffic from interfering with pedestrian and other vehicle onsite traffic?
You know, it's funny though, at Dunkin' Donuts, if you, if you come in. Right by the building. If that's, that could be, it's a problem right there, but if you go in. The entrance before that. Yeah. Then that works.
Until you try to leave Smithland. And take a right out of there and you're stuck in all the drive-through traffic.
No, I go in the one that's to Monroe and then I, I take the. That's what I do. I sit there and just wave to somebody and then they say. You know, that's, if you don't do that, you'll sit there all day. So, I don't know. And then there's the people that order ahead of time online or whatever they do, and they just come in and. Get right in front of you and. Three, three of them could do that at once and you're just sitting there. So I don't know.
Well, that's a great, I, I've heard that there's a Burger King in, uh, Colorado, I think it is, that has. Three drive-through windows. And they're differentiated. One is for pre-orders only. So that you just drive up, hold up your phone and get your package and go. And, uh, I don't, I don't, I don't see that that's for Old Tabor. We don't have the population to justify that. And at, at, at this time, but.
Dunkin' Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts, like you just mentioned, has a version of that. The right lane is the mobile app lane. But you.
That's second window. Isn't it for those people who did the mobile app thing? Yeah, well, they're not using that.
Very, maybe if you have two windows. And if you have a lane, if you have a lane for an app, pre-purchase kind of thing, then the second window has to be for them.
Well, it's there. Why aren't they using it?
So do we need to address the merging?
We should consider it.
Well. My, the lane in and of itself, it's helping stack, right? Cause now you've split and Dunkin' Donuts is a different. You know, place altogether.
Yeah.
Because that does have a very high percentage of people who use the app and just go in, right? Um, versus, it seems like almost no one, but I don't, I don't, I don't notice a lot.
If we were to have a Starbucks, it'd be the same thing.
The, the coffee crowds a little more.
Yeah, kind of, kind of people I think go through the McDonald's for coffee.
Yeah, yeah, yes. And use it. I think it's trending that way for sure. Cause people wanna wait less. I gotta think about that though, you know, dedicating a window to the mobile pickup. It's helping two ways. One, it's giving you that parallel stack, right? So that's, you know, you're next to the person, you're not behind the person. That helps overhaul. The other thing it helps with, if you're sharing a window, as I was saying before, now your average processing time has gone down. Because that's already weighted for you. And it's not taking a minute and a half to grab your order because you must order it at the window. It's taking fifteen seconds because it's a handoff and there's no, there's no money to trade. It's just, here's your order. Yeah, so it is already helping. The overall situation. Whether you wanna now.
Alright, drive-through windows, pedestrian safety and efforts to encourage walking to shops and serving. And as we increase the, um, the mileage of sidewalks in Old Tabor, especially in the B four district from. Kukusnet to Westbrook. Uh, or Dairy Queen to Westbrook even, and, uh. We want. More curb cuts, more vehicles crossing the newly installed sidewalks. That seems to be a cross purposes there.
So it seems like you're leaning towards more independent, smaller buildings on site. On a larger site versus having multiple. Curb cuts where McDonald's has two curb cuts, Burger King has two curb cuts, Chick-fil-A. Is that kind of what I'm? Is that kind of what I'm, I don't know?
Uh, that's the center production.
No, I, I, I'm just.
We can't do that.
I need to help write even regular later, so I kinda have, there's a lot of moving parts here, that's why I'm.
I don't, I can't say that I could visualize anywhere Wells Fargo's drive-through window has any stacking spaces other than. In the, the, the parking lot for commercials, but, uh, um. That's, that's a drive-through at the end of a multi-perp, and otherwise it's a multi-occupant building. Or is that a good thing, or that's the only one we have?
Doesn't seem to be contested at all there, though.
No.
But if it was a Chick-fil-A, we'd have a broth.
Yeah.
Right.
If, if, if.
Or CBS.
Or, yeah, if something else was located there, it would be a problem, because a lot of people use that access to go to.
Wallah.
Yeah, go around the back to Long Island.
You know, a little over by the, you know, you see the pastries in that bank drive-through and that side.
So, I think I, I'm hearing.
Everything.
The different tiers of. Popularity of what, where you're going. Like you said.
Will impact, I mean, you're gonna have fewer people going to the bank than the pharmacy or the restaurant.
Yeah.
So, maybe the bank needs to be something. Different, and maybe if it was a drive-through pharmacy with no indoor store, I don't know why they would wanna do that. Because they think they get just selling candy and all the other stuff you buy by the time you get your first ticket.
We're also allowed to drive through grocery. It's another.
I mean, it really could be any type of drive-through.
And no, certainly, yeah. As for drive-throughs with mobile ordering only. Would that be a use that we should establish, that, or. Set it up so that if you have two windows, one has to be exclusively for mobile ordering, not getting too much into, in, into their business.
Yeah, right, it's harder, that's gonna be hard to manage.
Yeah, you can't force it down. Yeah, that's, that's not landing, that's, that's their onsite condition, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
And I think you ended up with the same situation with the old number of stacking spaces. Today is gonna sparkle, but, and there's no stacking spaces, but tomorrow it's Chick-fil-A. I think you have to plan ahead because.
That says you can't, it's not a good idea to have actually the multi-use. Property. Because all the ones we're talking about, that's the problem, that's part of the problem.
Unless they have their separate interior parking lot, like. If you go to Middletown, like if you go to, there's a Price Shopper, and you pull in, and then they have a little Taco Bell with kind of its own. Parking lot, and then you pull in through that same entrance, and you can go to the bank.
That simulates having a proper.
Right. I just.
The, the single properties were less problem than the multi-use properties. Nearly thousands congested. You know, the banks across the street, they're, they're fine, but these, it's all a multi-use series. If you start a drive-through over by Spencer Plain Road, you go, ah. You know, so, you know, going crazy, so to me, that seems like we're talking ourselves into that as an issue.
Well, it's not just Spencer Plain Road, that west side of town, but also the Smarner's Way, B four.
Mariner's Way.
It's, yeah.
Mariner's Way.
Mariner's Way, yeah, yeah.
I mean, if somebody figured out a way to put a drive-through in front of the auto mall. I mean, it, yeah, that could happen.
Well, possibly it would, it's a drive-through there.
So, yeah, but, we need. Yeah, we're not seeking to exclude them all, which is seeking to, uh, regulate them to avoid potential problems.
Right.
Or, or save them, but. Alright, drive-through with no interior restaurant or lobby like Liberty Van Kiosk on Boston Post Road. I, I can see that it works for financial only. I don't see it working for pharmacy or for food-related drive, drive-throughs.
And do you wanna set some type of limitations on hours?
For all.
Interior, so what would stop McDonald's right now from shutting down their interior restaurant area? And just using the drive? They'll say it's less intensive, and I'm just thinking it could be any restaurant. So, is it that you want the restaurant where people are gonna go in, in like a happily decent-sized restaurant? I mean, you could have a McDonald's or a Joe's Hamburgers with eight seats inside. And everything else goes through the drive-through, so you're kind of.
Right, so right now, we have a requirement that in order to have a drive-through restaurant, isn't there a minimum square footage gross floor area of the building?
Right, but what if I built my restaurant or my pharmacy, and then I closed my pharmacy or my restaurant? And came back and said, well, gee, or I, I'm opening it one day a week because it's nonprofit, or I don't have staff.
Right.
I mean, do you wanna set some kind of minimums?
Yeah, because then you would, the drive-through would stay open later.
Well, you're pretty much.
And so.
The drive, you would make up for your drive-through, your, you'd use the drive-through but still have your restaurant. Or your pharmacy. So, for example, if Burger King just said, okay, we're gonna open Saturday mornings, there's still an indoor restaurant. Which puts more volume on the drive-through.
They can do a split from, from six o'clock to eight o'clock is drive-through only.
It's a drive, it's a drive-through with a restaurant, rather than a restaurant with a drive-through.
Well, and, and that's really where I'm going with it, is what are those parameters, you don't have any.
Well, it's in a drive-through, an accessory use?
Mm-hmm.
Just throwing it out.
You can't have an accessory use without a primary use.
Just. Yeah, well, the primary use is, I mean, it just. But if you're taking away, like, an inside restaurant.
You're taking away, I'm not using.
No, she does closing. Closing her some of that time, then you're, there'd be more people to use the driver, so that's just making it more congested. Because there's gotta be people that, like, see the drive-through line and say, oh, no, I'm not waiting, and then go park, right?
Right.
I mean, that's a lot, but. But when you, when you go up to, and I'm in town right now, that I've gone up to to park, and then I go to the door, it's locked. How is that an indoor pharmacy or, or whatever? So, this is, I guess, where, why I'm going this way, and it's, well, we're short staff. Or we limited our hours, so how do you, are, are you forcing someone to build an indoor restaurant? Who doesn't want an indoor restaurant? Limits the hours, and the accessory drive-through becomes the primary.
This, well, I think the accessory drive-through on most of these now is the primary, right?
Yeah.
I mean, and, and, well, anyone here, definitely. And I think you're gonna see less indoor because, unless the staffing increases, you know, everyone I've talked to just cannot get staff.
Yeah, that's right.
And they're gonna.
So, maybe we.
Cater to where the most population is going through, and that's the driving.
So, maybe we no longer follow this in accessory use?
Please, please, check the regs to look to see if a drive-through window is required to be at current reg, rates. To be part of an, a, a minimal restaurant or others who were a bit of establishment with a minimum gross floor area. Does it specifically say the gross floor area has to be for the food business? Or if you decided to have open the drive-through only, and you have the rest of the building, can you put a different business in the rest of the building?
Could the whole building be storage, and someone working there with two tables? I, I mean, this is where I'm asking, you're accessory, and that's why I'm asking these questions. Because I think we're getting to a point that drive-throughs are primary.
Yeah.
Right, and then you get to, what is a building gonna look like if it's just a drive-through?
So, if I build a minimum building size, and half of the building is my storage area. And in my prep area, and ten percent of it is the lobby, a- and the office and the ladies room. Is that, is that a principal use anymore? I mean, when we have that, or something the other way, you need to have that option.
So, maybe as part of that, you say, that's okay to do, but, you know, instead of a. Twelve-car guideline is a sixteen-car guideline.
And, and in case of this, you don't need to park.
Because you don't have, uh, whatever, the twenty-five percent that's going inside, and fifty percent.
You need half the parking.
You have to do a limited parking area, at least, because you wouldn't need an accessory parking.
And the thing is.
Why, why don't people do it?
I know.
You know, I don't always drive away after my work. I mean, I'm doing what I'm doing.
Right. Well, then, with the new sign regs, making signs smaller, you know, you put the drive-through only business. If they're way far away from the street line, on a minimum square foot lot.
Right.
And they're not gonna like that, so they'll go find some other place to do it, right? Alright, drive-through pharmacy with more than prescription services, vaccination or other products brought to you at the window. If you're involved with Yale, they won't do that, they want you to go to their facility and go in and pay whatever they can get out of it.
I guess one other thing, one other question with that is, what if you're going to Yale or Middlesex, and you pull into a parking lot? And now you're getting swabbed or taking whatever test it is, and a parking lot with someone coming out in a moon suit, just.
That, that's been done.
Well, that's, I mean.
Well, they, the, the medical deal doesn't like that, because they have a hard time justifying charging for the use of the building. If you never left your car.
Maybe they don't need a building either.
Well.
Drive-through vaccination.
Drive, drive-through vaccination.
CBS did it, and then it was down at the, the, you know, the, the end of, that's right. But who else did it? Who came out and did that from their building?
Middlesex Urgent Care did it.
Oh, they did it?
And they just currently do testing, or I'm in there. Over the summer, and they, you park in the parking lot and swab you.
It's a belief during emergency conditions?
Or when you have COVID, or you think you have COVID, that's when you go get a, a PCR test, they don't want you in the building infecting their other customers. So, you go online, you pick the time, when you get to the parking lot, there's a sign, you pull the number, somebody comes out.
Yeah, great, you don't have to go in the building with all the sick people.
Yeah. Okay, well, you're the sick person getting everybody else.
Yeah, but you get sick after you went.
I'm just saying.
No.
If you're un-positive before you.
You are now.
Alright.
And, yeah, there's some sort of parking landscaping and other rigs there, and. Oh, and currently allowed B two to be more under certain conditions, yeah. Yeah, special exception.
Right.
That means, yeah, I mean, all the site type requirements, and then we, as a commission, look at it in terms of, does it. Enhance the, 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 the property of the district, the area, the, the, the Old Tewksbury kind of thing, and, uh. It, it has to be an accessory use. And then there's a breakout of being, parts being different, especially part B with financial, yeah.
Yeah.
So, part A is, is, that, that's old school, that's us, that's where we.
Well, these are, these are our big targets.
Yeah, they, they're gonna be a couple of questions, and.
So, I guess. For me to help, perhaps something, what, what else are your likes or dislikes, what?
One of, one of my dislikes would be to have a, if there was a large. Parcel land to have amassed the drive-throughs one right after the other. I don't think that's, um, the character of Old Tewksbury.
Oh, I agree, so if we're limiting the number of drive-throughs on a lot, is it? If you had a bank, a pharmacy, and a restaurant, is that okay? I'm just, where do we have that?
We don't.
We don't, but it could have, just, does it matter?
Or we just limit X.
Yeah, is it more about limiting the number of drive-throughs, or is it that the drivers coordinate the traffic flow?
There's not even that, if we had a parcel of land like this table.
Yep.
And you had McDonald's, Burger King, Taco Bell, everybody else, five of them in a row. I think that's not the character.
Correct, oh, that'd be safety.
Right, well, you could control the, the flow of vehicles on a lot that size by, you know, limiting entrance and exit. And other things, but I think it's more. The character, now, to your point, if you had a restaurant, a financial institution, and a pharmacy. I, I would, as opposed to that.
So, I'm just thinking, if it's taken out, then there's, what do you, I mean, I'm just thinking, picking on. I don't know how many of you have been at the Prince Traveler and Home Depot in Middletown.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in the front, so you go in and it's traffic light, and you go to the front, and Taco Bell is. Up on the front, but the grocery store in the back, and then you go through and you take a right.
Right.
And there's, I think, a TV bank. I think they have a Starbucks there now. And a Walgreens, is it that you don't like the appearance of them along the front? Is it the number, is it the use?
All of them.
All of them, okay.
Right, and that, that's where the strip in, in Middletown is like the Berlin Turnpike.
Right.
Right.
Oh, no, I didn't like that.
Okay.
And that, and, and that's, it's more to the, what I, I try to classify as a character of the city.
Right, even though they're, we're talking about commercial.
Right.
Facilities that looks too commercialized.
I mean, you control the architect design and all of that.
So, what you're saying, this thing is this minimum distance between fast foods?
I, I'm. Not allowing to fall in that type of.
I agree with that.
That type of study. Not, or B two or anywhere where you had a sizable piece of acreage where you could put. Uh, five, three, whatever it would be, all in a row.
In a single lot, in a single lot, yeah.
I don't necessarily, I mean, to think of it the other way, you know, if it's a sizable piece, what if. You had five little lots, where you have Burger King on their property, Taco Bell, you, you know, is it the distancing? Is it, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be a big. But, I mean, the smaller lots, you're gonna have more curb cuts, because each one is gonna have to have an entrance and an exit, which is.
You, could you control, could you control the individual by, through zoning and requiring. Shared entrance and exits?
Well.
That's, that's actually what I think in the middle town, is they have that one entrance of a.
But all their front buildings in certain area, I don't know if you're familiar with that.
Yes, they're all.
You have left-hand, you have second-hand drive vehicles, you have to go.
It's not, it is, they're all drive-throughs in the front, so they're linear buildings, they're essentially all drive-throughs. Whether it's a bank, a pharmacy, and you go into the same entry, and it's all onsite with. You know, the, the larger buildings in the back.
Mm-hmm, right.
So, is it, and, and that's why I'm asking all these, it seemed to be kind of silly questions, if they were all. If you had the drive-throughs in the back, would it matter?
You know, I think we need to limit the kind of buildings that are gonna be, I mean.
Yeah, good, well, so what you're talking about is a singular property owner that has multiple buildings within that piece of property. The challenge here, I think, is more of individual pieces of property, and how do you figure out how to not have them so closely. Put together.
Right.
Or if they are, how do you make it tie together, which I don't know that we can.
I, I, I don't know, I, I don't know.
Individual property owners tie them together.
I mean, think about where CBS, CBS was a pizza restaurant, a sit-down restaurant, a furniture store. So, we asked what? Yeah.
Our new CBS on the corner?
So, but this is the whole thing, think about how things can become a big law runner. When they were the little lots, so, so I think you kind of have the same issue. I think it's gonna be tougher with a lot of little lots, because you're putting more curb cuts and more traffic, and this is. On a route one, which it's gonna be harder to.
Yeah, you could, you could limit that, the individual.
Yeah, you could you could limit that the individuals by a radius this. You couldn't have the.
See the 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 reason, you know, we were thinking traffic, but the reason for the one thousand, you know, radius. Same same more for caring.
More right. Well, what if you have, what if you have a developer? Right. So what if you have a developer that has one large parcel who wants to develop it with multiple? That's what I'm trying to.
That you agree this would apply.
Well, can't we limit the fast food restaurant in the one area?
We can do whatever, but I'm trying to get, I guess what I'm, we keep going around is I'm trying to get feedback from all of you as to to what you want and I think the more we.
Example, the town of Marlboro for their drive throughs, certainly at the banks, no fast food restaurants.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Which feels like.
Separation by lot.
Which feels like that mean one restaurant, any number of restaurants here, there has to be like that. Are there any already there that were treated for that or?
The only one that that uh is interesting is there used to be a Bank of America that had a drive through and now to Dunkin' Donuts. So I'm not quite sure how they how that happened. Uh, you know, other than they're taking advantage of an already existing drive through. But other than that, they don't allow.
Not even pharmacies, just financial, just you just banks.
No Dunkin' Donuts, nothing.
Well.
I've never seen one like that.
I mean, it is, maybe they regulate it that. A Starbucks and a Dunkin' Donuts, we consider them restaurants, maybe it's different if it's some kind of a beverage.
Or coffee.
Coffee. But I mean, it could be an orange, yes, or a.
For that.
Yeah, or is it putting limitation on by lot size? Yeah, the eighty thousand.
Well, I think you have to add that as well.
Hundred sixty or two.
Yeah, I think you do, but what Jeff suggested based on his experiences, that eliminates the concern. You develop a new, you know, Emery's point, develop a new category of coffee shops. Handle that and your financial institutions, the drive throughs that are in town today get the same. Your grandfather, obviously, and then limits that growth.
That's a great idea.
I think Old Line is very similar. I don't think they allow drive throughs.
So would you break it down? We would have.
Yeah.
So would coffee or whatever? Just beverages be?
Staples, coffee and ice cream.
But anyway, whatever.
I know. Shops have food.
Yeah.
Now.
I mean, they. Stop it alone and save it. Grilled cheese and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, their primary business is coffee, is coffee, yeah. I think that's probably how you could do it.
All right. What else?
I'm gonna.
Yeah, so we come to that this way, we we spare a little bit to the important things. And so we'll we'll make a make a new list.
Yeah.
With the things that we feel we need to change. Okay, and 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 then the spectrum, then the part of that list will be the spectrum of that change.
What if, and it may not be for your next meeting, I take what we have. Try to do some options and actually give you some text.
I think that would be.
To read and look at and and that's why we're having, I sent you these questions because I have no idea where to start. I mean, I do have ideas. But something and it could be. Yeah, thank you. So if that is bad, you need something just to kind of throw against the wall and see what happens. You see, nobody's adding. You know, is it?
Well, I think we had it. We had good dialogue and.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, to to get somewhere, but you're right. It's like you saying and how do you get your arms around it?
We're coming on you, Chris.
Then I'll spring and jump and be like.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
So we mentioned to Jerry, if you wanna have multiple drive throughs in a big lot. You have a separation distance from lot that has one to the next lot that could have one. That would mean that you couldn't have some ding 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 on different lots down the road, but they could be consolidated on one big.
Right.
Well, I I think we put a favor, Jeff's. Put a cap on the number.
Here.
Huh? None?
None. But I I think about all these unique businesses and people are creating now, do you do you wanna prohibit somebody from creating something that really could benefit us down?
No, we don't.
Yeah, you know, you get the pandemic. They want people able to pick up. You know, you don't wanna take that away necessarily.
Especially when that gets in the bubble they dump.
I think you gotta look at two people, if there's a tourist destination, you have a lot of, I think we're lucky, we have a lot of small restaurants. Yeah, and we do smaller pharmacies and other things that we're eating. You know, are we gonna become like everywhere USA depending on what you choose to do? Is that what you want?
No, we don't want to become like everybody.
No.
Right. We have to just maintain a sense of place that we don't have exactly the same thing as other places. Then there's no point in coming to.
That's kind of where I'm going, right?
That's the rest of the country lies on the people from away bringing their money here.
That was kind of my point. It's gonna want to. Still maintain the ability for these unique businesses to be able to open up and become destinations here as opposed to the chains.
Right. Oh, I would favor the small business than individuals than than the chains any day in a day.
Yeah, I think.
Absolutely. Cause that's that's.
That's what we'd like to have the backbone of.
Yeah, right, absolutely. And so don't penalize them, penalize.
That's right.
Or with the home office.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you. I think I oughta work that into. All right, thank you. Thank you for coming. We in front, I think we.
What sound was that?
This one. We were seriously, we were finally incorporated into model of just fans and people are doing and it's. And I think Old Line, whether. And with great, feel free to to share.
Yeah, right.
I mean, I think I have to, I have to drag something at least for you to go love it, eat it. Yeah, yeah, no, certainly, but at least this is just a construct.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I didn't wanna get into how we have left hand drive cars. And that purposely makes you have to be on a certain side of the building because that's where the driver is, very kind. But that's another limiting factor for the guys.
You have to have one of the pizza things from the pizza.
Look into if you have a right hand drive vehicle, you can't live with drive through. Gotta yell. Thank you. Uh, the next on our agenda is.
Thank you. I'll let me put something together and I'm gonna talk to both of you.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you, brother. I'm gonna need all the health items. I know, we're all soon. I'm not saying I don't have.
They have grilled cheese and they have grilled cheese. All right, committee's representative has asked after you. The journey in Portland, hopefully.
Thank you again. All right, so quickly. Um. I emailed this most of you, yeah. So your proposal, does anybody need a hard copy? I did this. So I haven't been making too many hard copies if I email it, I mean, unless we can share stuff about your.
Good night.
Good night.
Save.
Happy holidays.
Thank you. So this is. A proposal for research, forty research pathway, which is currently pathway lighting with business industrials. And in industrial zone. Motor vehicle repairs and services are accessory for motor vehicle use. So this narrative, I don't know how many of you got to go through it, if you wanna take a minute. Is looking to. Say that by storing cars in a facility, that would be the primary use. And they would have custom services for light tunas. To perform a total or the ability to. Perform a full restoration. So. Have these like special cars.
Here.
Hi, Ian.
Hi, Ian.
Okay. So what they're saying is motor vehicle uses when clearly accessory and subordinate to another use, and it's the underlying words from the regulations to drive what type of activities involve manufacturing. Director, indirect, assembly, commercial storage. Welcome in machine shop works. So I guess where I'm struggling with this is we've never really had a. Storage warehouse. With an accessory motor vehicle. Use it's always been a motor vehicle. So for example, I have. A company and all my trucks are stored there. And I'm moving my materials that I make. So I have a mechanic on duty. When my truck breaks down, I can fix it on site. That's always how it's been applied. Not to a storage. Facility, we've always had some kind of an industry. That people were shipping products in and out, not. Stored or wholesale. And and I don't. Agree that electrical sheet metal woodworking welding or machine shop is similar.
Yeah, the question is how do you categorize the proposed use in order to make it uh aligned with the allowed uses in the industrial zone? And I think if you categorized it as a warehousing operation or vehicle storage first. That's the maximum wear footage inside the building dedicated to one purpose. And there are other activities that go along with that, that would be the accessory uses. To flip it and say that the the automotive. Manufacturing, caretaking, whatever, changing stuff is a primary use and you have indoor storage. That's uh, you could do it that way, but it doesn't, it doesn't make as much sense.
Yeah.
Go with both of them.
Go with the first one and then what is it?
No, it's not go with the the warehousing. I guess it does it make sense to you because it's gonna be your review as a special exception permit?
Yeah.
It's just kind of a unique one, usually.
A unique one, but it also. Yes, yeah. But there's there's that like doesn't evolve that. I think you hear that.
Oh, it's one of the times I like.
Yeah.
What the. Of the building across the street that they showed the picture of. Um, on corner, which one, yeah? They were storing cars in both, I mean, over a year.
But they never.
I haven't realized that, yeah.
It's just the whole motor vehicle repair license. I could associate all stored is kind of an odd situation. That's why it's in front of you. Well, it says machine shops. That's the regulation.
They're gonna keep the these valuable vehicles indoors, right? They don't need to have a lot of outdoor parking. So the warehouse is a latest parking requirement, so that ultimately.
Right.
Yeah. Next one, seven forty five eatery. I don't know if anybody means.
Yeah, the question on.
I only printed.
Forty five question is whether or not it's a bigger reminder modification, yeah. Yeah, they're changing the landscaping, but it's in a direction which would usually conceive of as being a positive and reducing and non-conformity with regards to the. Landscape buffer, perimeter landscape buffer. And um, I think the raising of the patio is a a and the in, where where's the increase in square? Square footage of impervious? It was a little bit on the parking space on the left, left side. I thought one closes to Route one.
But there are any additional landscape.
One space and then we have to handle that parking close to the ramp. And the ramp is in the increase in impervious? Or?
So you've got this other plan here. I don't know if you saw that.
Yeah.
And the engineer put that together today and he's saying with the increase in landscaping. There's, yes, there's some additional. Impervious surface, but the overall with the new landscaping is less impervious than I knew. So the main reason for this is that the patio. Is it an awkward grade? And once they started doing the work, they're looking at the patio, looking the way the pitch was with the drainage. They decided to upgrade it, which by upgrading it, it tripped the handicapped access. So new patio. New railings, um, the planters, additional landscaping and the shift of the parking.
Sorry, one one question. New patio, how how old the elevation of the previous patio? And did it count as coverage of for, you know what I mean? Cause we have the. Does it make a difference if it's more than six inches, but it's going to sixteen?
The old one was probably six inches, however. How the curb was.
In our regulations, we create things that are taller than six inches differently.
Have to use this to magnify because I'm sure a lot.
The question is that they fall into the new category.
So the main thing that's going up.
I know it does for decks. I'm not sure about pad.
So if you look at the plans there, and I know it's a little hard at the scale, so you're going from. Their elevations from the top of the curb to the bottom of the curb. They are going through and they are making changes, but the increase in the curb height is also. Gonna stop people from just kind of driving. So now you have a little bit more of a nudge. When you hit the curb because it's higher in certain areas. So if you. Look over, so one side of the patio, and I don't have the spot elevation for the actual patio as it exists, but the top of the curb is going from seventeen point nine seven inches to eighteen point five five inches. Either way, it was still, I don't think they're changing, thinking too much of the. Height, they're changing the grade. So if we didn't count it as coverage. Before, I don't believe it's gonna be covered this time and either way, it would have been non-conforming with respect to coverage if it was over. The the six inches. So think about it this way, we do have situations where you have a curb and sidewalk that's. Sometimes could be six inches that we don't count as.
You didn't change the parking space, did you? Who's gonna change to the parking spaces?
They, yeah, they are.
It was twenty two?
Oh, no, they're changing the location. There's no change.
There's no change in the amount.
It's getting.
It was just the location.
Yeah.
It looks looks as long.
I think it looks.
Previously existing non-conforming space on the ground that was the patio was at this elevation. Now the patio is at a higher elevation. My question pertaining to the change in the height. Of the patio, the elevation. So. It doesn't change the footprint of the patio according to the plan, does it? No, not as far as I can tell. Does the change in height make it, it make a difference? If it doesn't make any difference, then everything's good. I don't think it makes.
So can this be handled? Is this something you wanna see as a minor modification and is now you?
You can make determination, the minor modification.
A site.
Creative exception and the only more conservative.
Handle it. So it's a little modification. Modification with existing approved site plan.
Yeah.
To improve ADA access.
That could be a special exception from this restaurant.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything?
No? I'm gonna get me something else. No, no.
Any representative report? Uh, no, no, we're good.
Uh, no, no, okay.
Jerry Lewis made the motion to adjourn. Second to five.
Oh.
Mark on.
Okay.
Mark out the. Time of Jerry Lewis's motion to adjourn. Say aye. Those motion carried unanimously, please.